So they can see us on the internet too?
No. So you have a, um, you have things that can be at least a time of doing the service. And you JB?
Yeah, that's my nickname.
This is Miss Solah?
Solane.
Solane?
Solane.
Solane, Solane. Okay. Alright. My this bird.
How you doing?
All cells off please. This bird off there.
It's time now for the Town Talker with Reverend Zachariah A. Jackson. Reverend Jackson is founding pastor of the church of what's happening now located in Plainfield, New Jersey. And now the Town Talker Reverend Zachariah Jackson.
Well, you know it's good coming to you. This is the Reverend Zachariah A. Jackson from the Town Talker Talk Show, Church of What's Happening Now. And what's happening now is that we are, I guess, can't wait. I, I had a nightmare this morning. I went back to sleep on vacation. So I had a nightmare that, uh, John McCain won. So I got up and said, whoa, I run down the steps and the cat was running behind me.
That is a nightmare.
I said, whoa, am I walking, am I sleeping, whatever? So let's hope that that nightmare is just what it is.
Yes.
Okay, cause uh, let's let the Palin and, uh, John, you know what I'm saying, be where they need to be. Uh, uh, I know Adrian Matt, Matt spoke of a pelican bird or was it Palin bird? Palin bird.
Palin.
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 Palin bird that, that come down to, uh, Barbados and I, I remember the story of a pelican bird that was out in the mid, uh, uh, um, Pacific Ocean. And a, a whale was coming up and swallowing, you know, fish and accidentally took a pelican bird in. And then it went down and came back up and spicked the bird out. So, and I'm not, you know, I'm not playing, hating the, uh, the young woman that's running for office. It's always good. That's one thing about being American that we are able to run for office. But today I think that, you know, with, with all that's going on, you know, they are, of course, at this moment, uh, lowering the gas prices and stuff. And, um, that's a good thing. I hope they bring it all the way down, you know? Get tired of riding, um, big old man like me fit in a little, uh, car, you know what I mean? I gotta squeeze in a car to save gas, you know? Couple hundred dollars go back and forth from local airport. So we just hope, you know what I mean? Uh, you know, you, you get tired of putting gas in, I was saying, maybe they need a, a one-seater car. You know, they're tempted just a one-seater, just meat going back and forth, you know? And it's costing the, uh, like the devil. I'm sure it don't have to be that way, cause they bringing it all down now and hopefully that it stay down. And unfortunately it didn't come down in May, you know, cause we had the whole summer to be bothered with ga- high gas prices and stuff. And it kinda hurt, I think it hurt the community some because when you're riding down the road, instead of buying an extra hamburger, you know? A lot of people were pulling out grills in the backyard on turnpike to pull over and instead of, uh, going in the rest area, they pulled out a grill and cooking hamburgers right there on, on, on the, on turnpike. So we just hope that, uh, we can, can, can bring this thing to the end. So we, we have a mini guest tonight and out, uh, today, you know, an interesting guest. I wanna start with, uh, Denise Clark, I believe it is?
Yes.
Uh, uh, and Denise is, has a food bank and of course we have, uh, a great, uh, 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 candidate. I guess he's a candidate now, cause somebody running to get some, you know? Uh, uh, Adrian Matt running for city council, is that right?
That is correct.
And, uh, so we-
Third ward.
Third, third ward, you know, so and then we have, of course, the legendary Steve Hatchet of P O P, People Organized for Progress. And we've had a lot of problems in the city. Murders are going on in the city and everything, uh, so that we hope that, uh, and pray that your march, uh, Saturday, Steve?
Saturday at three P M.
At three P M.
Asking as many people as possible to come on out.
Okay, well that mic there's not working, so we're gonna switch you to this mic. But of course, uh, as a customer of the Church of What's Happening Now, uh, go ahead, you say when it is?
The march is this coming Saturday at three P M. on the corner of Monroe Avenue and West Third Street at three P M. It's extremely important for as many people to come out and show what they're outraged as to what continues to go on in our communities with the gun violence that's going on.
Okay, and also, I'm gonna freeze you on that right there. We're gonna come back, of course, as, uh, we, uh, give as a donation to the community, a, a two-minute blog. We normally would do three minutes, but we had guests that I invited last week and they showed up this week, so hopefully they come this week and then come next week for another two-minute blog. Uh, we got gentleman contact, uh, uh, Mr. JB and lady contact, Ms. Soliris?
Solane.
Solane, Ms. Solane. And they have a dating service, so all of you out there that need, you know? I guess we all need a little help. I know when he walked up to me and in the supermarket the other day and said he had a dating service. And I said, I ain't hardly paying no money to meet nobody. I gotta already pay for gas. I gotta pay for all this food. If, you better pay me. I ain't paying to me, you know what I mean? But then we, we talked and we smoothed it over. So, uh, 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 Mr. JB, you wanna say some words?
Sure. Well, you know what? Um, we saw a need for, um, this service that, um, we had started just recently. And, uh, you know, her girlfriends and some of my buddies have been talking about what you get on the internet as far as dating. And there are a lot of games, a lot of people are unsatisfied with who they're meeting because people are putting up phony pictures.
Sure.
That, you know, they took ten years ago and you got married folks trying to, you know?
Skies, the sex skies and stuff, yeah.
Uh, we decided we wanted to try something that we could put back into the community, old-fashioned, quality matchmaking service for African-Americans. And we've been very successful.
Okay. Go ahead.
Now, one of the things that we do is we pre-screen all of our potential clients.
Yes.
We're looking for a long-term committed relationship.
Okay.
And we take all their information. We spend about forty-five minutes with them. And by doing that, we could match them up with exactly what they're looking for in a mate.
Wow, wow, forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes.
Okay, alright. I've been looking forty-five years. See, I got under his shoes. I've been looking for a long time, boy. Boy, I looked and I looked. Boy, I walk all through Russia backwards and everything and all through Africa from South Africa all the way up to West. And I still, you understand me, so.
And speaking about that, and, and I'm talking about old-fashioned because back in the day, that's how it used to be done.
Right.
Your grandparents or your mom, your dad would, or your sister, brother, cousin, whatever, would know somebody and they would introduce you.
Well, well, you know, let me interject this right here. Uh, I know I had an uncle that his wife died years ago. And, uh, he sent to Georgia for a wife and that's where we come from. And do you know that the woman come from Georgia? And I still don't know how. We met at the Penn Station and I don't know, uh, I don't know how, but the food that she had brought food and the food still was hot. You know, the food still was hot in, in the bowl or in the pot and everything. Come all the way up on, on the Amtrak train years ago, we met at the Penn Station. Of course she became a great, a good aunt, you know, and, and, and mother to my cousins and everything. And that very deal was a rap. It was all done through the church and everything and through the community. So go ahead.
And so that's, that's what we were trying to get back into the community. We wanna offer some quality service for, for African-Americans, men and women who want a quality, long-term committed relationship. Now, a lot of the ladies say that there aren't enough guys.
Sure, sure.
You know, and, and we realize that. So what we've done is we have personalized scouts that are out and we don't, you know, recruit in bars or, you know, um, clubs, none of that.
Sure.
You know, we go to organizations, companies, you know, supermarkets, the malls. And this is how we recruit quality people and then we sit down and we interview them.
Okay, now, now, as you know, this is a two-minute blog and we way over two minutes. It got good, so you know, I, I kinda figured that was gonna happen. But, uh, anyway, anytime you talk about date, love and food and politics and civil rights, that's something good, that's a good recipe. And then don't we have a good recipe? We got the politics, civil rights and food right here, all in one, one house. Okay, how do they contact you? I want you here next week too.
The name of the company is Made in Heaven.
Okay.
It's a personalized matchmaking firm.
Okay.
Dating and service for today's discerning African-American singles. And they can call us at seven three two eight eight one.
Okay.
Three four two two.
Okay, is the internet address?
Uh, we're working on the internet, internet, um, you know, webpage right now.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's to come.
So give the number one more time.
Seven three two eight eight one three four two two.
And give your name and, and-
And my name is JB. Guests, gentlemen ask for JB and ladies ask for Solane.
Okay, alright, well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Happy to have you guys. And, and again, come next week, cause I invited you next week anyway. You're here this week. Okay, let's go to business as usual. What about the food bill, this food thing, uh, bank that you have and everything?
Yes, um, this food, um, bank that we have, it's called Angel Food Ministries.
Okay.
It's out of New Vision Ministries where Apostle Forrest Walker Senior is the pastor there.
Okay.
And, um, it's at five oh four South Avenue in Plainfield. And once a month, we distribute food for the purchase of thirty dollars and the food worth is seventy-five dollars in the grocery stores.
Okay, and, and, and we have a box of the food here?
Yes.
Starting with what we have, what is that right there?
We have frozen corn.
Okay.
We have mixed vegetables. We have a box of Stroganoff pasta. We have pork chops.
Okay.
We have riblets. We have milk.
Okay.
We have beef sirloin.
Alright.
As well as steaks.
Okay.
You receive seventeen food items for the price of thirty dollars. And it consists of meats, vegetables and starches and you receive, um, a dessert as well.
And this right here is a chicken?
That's chicken, boneless breast chicken. Everything is first class, nothing secondhand.
Okay.
We have, um, pancake mix as well.
Alright, and now, and, and this right here is the-
And macaroni cheese.
Macaroni and cheese, that's what everybody like. And of course, my favorite, beans.
Beans, and you can see bags of beans as well.
Okay, now these are pinto. Do you do navy or you just do pinto?
We do, um, pinto and as well as black beans.
Okay, black beans, okay.
Yes.
So now, the idea is this here, is with this here, you're saving what, seventy-five, uh, thirty-five dollars or something like that?
You're saving anywhere from forty, thirty-five to forty dollars.
Okay, okay. Now, as you know, for those that's, um, more holistic or, or the holal, uh, 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 calling the holal eaters, meaning that those that don't eat pork, do you, do you do a, a kosher package at all?
At this time, no, we don't do a kosher package. But we do have, um, beef included in the package.
So can, can a person, um, I think I told you about this on the telephone, I was on the road at the time. But can a person say they don't want the pork and they want something else in, in, in between or whatever?
No, they can't. They have to receive what is in the box.
Okay, okay.
And as well, we rec- we, um, take money orders, cash and family first card.
Oh, wow, wow, and it's, and, okay. Alright, well, we'll come back to you. Alright, let's go to Adrian Matt. How you doing, Adrian?
I'm doing just wonderful.
You, you doing wonderful?
Yes, I am.
How do you feel? Next, next month is your big day too, the fourth.
Alright. Fourth of November is a big day, not just for Adrian Matt, who is running for the third ward council seat. But it's a big day for this great nation. It's an opportunity that we have to make history.
Sure.
It's an opportunity for us to take this country in a new direction. It's an opportunity for us to bring change to this country through the leadership of Barack Obama. We know that we are experiencing great economic stress right now.
Sure.
With the stock market at an all-time low. With a hundred and sixty thousand jobs lost last month. And with just severe economic stringencies that we all face with. With the prime, the, the subprime mess, not just the subprime mess, but the mortgage crisis in general. People are losing their homes and so we need change in America and we need to make sure that on Tuesday, November the fourth, that we come together as a nation to bring about change by electing Barack Obama to be the President of the United States.
Wow, and we hope that that right there can come together because I tell you, there's negative energy out there. And, and you know, um, uh, maybe you can elaborate on this right here. Someone the other day on the radio program was talking about when McCain referred to Obama as, uh, uh, this one over here. I think, and, and I'm not putting you on the spot either, and it's the best as I, best I can. One thing that I believe that we're gonna have to get used to is coming from a, um, a private sector into the mainstream that there's words that they use, you understand me? Just like with the cartoons that will be portrayed of the president. You know, we've seen him on Richard Nixon, we've seen him on all the, I don't think that Obama is not gonna have these cartoons. Now, they're gonna show him probably with a big nose and big, and a big Afro and his wife with a big Afro. Cause actually, that's what we have without the other stuff that go along with it. So we're gonna have to, you know, uh, you know, we're gonna have to grow up a little bit too. You know, I, I didn't look at it when he said the other guy. I didn't look at that as no kind of basis of offensive because that's, I know politics and I know what they do. You understand what I mean? I know the game. Bill Clinton and, and, uh, I believe it was, um, Poland got hit with a pie. If you remember, the young man threw a pie in his face, you know? You know how black people, it's about their face, you know? So the idea is that, you know, if we're gonna play the game, we got to play, you know, as long as it don't go deeply rooted, you know, too deep. But we're gonna have to play the game to a degree that, you know, you've had to allow for these cartoons now, you, you know, and things that you can't, you know, throw a, 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 a banner all the time, you know, when this thing come down because trust me, uh, they're not gonna spare them either. Cause they didn't spare the other ones. The only thing I want people to do is that I understand, I understand, cause see, you know, we're coming from a special, I always call it a special sector. And, uh, like it or not, it's, that's what, that will, that's what was dealt to us by Pharaoh, if you will, you understand me? Coming, you know, for our social order. Ain't got nothing to do with Jesus in the church. Often said here on Hobbs Radio, what if Jesus in the church, I'd be alright? It's a social order that I had to, you know, come through. You see, with Jesus in church, he helped me through it, you understand me? You see what I'm trying to say? So I'm bringing on Jesus. But I just want, you being a politician and you being in politics so long, as I often say this right here, Adrian, uh, when you was out, I didn't even know, cause you showed up everywhere, you know? I said, somebody said, Adrian, I said, wait a minute, no.
I know.
Not, not, the, the guy live around the corner from me yet? No, 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 he's, he's already, that he, that's not the one. They said, no, he's, I said, no, he's not running for office. He already in office. They see him at every, every event, so maybe you can help us a little bit, land us on this one.
Well, first to the comment of John McCain, I don't believe that it was a racist comment. I believe that it was a demonstration of, of desperation.
Okay.
And it was a total lack of respect for a colleague and for an opponent.
Sure.
And I think that the comment simply shows that John McCain would stoop to any level.
Sure.
And he knows that the people across this country are looking for new leadership and he realizes that he is behind in the polls and that Barack Obama is gaining momentum. And so he is desperate and he doesn't know what to do in terms of offering up solutions to the great crisis that we are faced with. And let's face it, John McCain is just another George Bush. And if we were to go in that direction, we would be getting four more years of George Bush. And the people want change.
Yes.
Change does not exist in John McCain. It is with Obama and that's where the future lies. And so although I am running as a candidate this November for the third ward and I will be focusing on the needs of the Plainfield, uh, community. I think what is more important is what is happening on the national level.
Sure.
And that we elect a president that would bring solutions to the many problems that we face, such as the healthcare crisis before forty-seven million people not having any form of healthcare.
Right.
And the solution that is being proposed by John McCain, offering two thousand five hundred dollar credit for, uh, single and for a family, five thousand dollars.
That's definitely-
That is not the answer.
Nah.
Because it's gonna cost you more. And so when you look at taking away the tax credits that businesses are getting for providing healthcare to their workers, if you were to do with that, what you're gonna do, you're gonna swell the ranks of the uninsured and we're gonna be in a much worse place than we are today. And so Barack's solution of universal healthcare, of making, um, healthcare, um, portable, that is that you will take it from job to job. I think that the solutions offered up by Barack Obama, not letting, uh, uh, not letting existing, um, you know, medical conditions, um, prevent you from getting the healthcare that you need. I think these are the things that are resonating with the American people and this is what John McCain doesn't have an answer for. And so he's stooping to some very low depths in order to try to diminish Barack Obama. But none of that will happen and I will, I'll comment later about Palin and why I believe she was brought into this race.
Okay, okay. Steve Hatchet, uh, right to Steve. Steve, uh, you chairman of, uh, the People Organization Progress here in Plainfield. And, um, you're putting a march together this Saturday.
Yes. This Saturday at three P M. we're asking all of Plainfield and also the surrounding communities to come in and get involved because of what is going on in our streets right now. We had three, well, three gunshots within fourteen-hour period here in Plainfield. And that is kind of scary, especially with those of us with children.
Yes.
I mean, because, uh, one man was shot and killed, uh, Chaquan Carter, Karan Carter. Thirty-one-year-old man, shot down and killed in the head at, on the corner of, um, Monroe Avenue and West Third Street. And that's what we will be having a demonstration at this coming Saturday at three P M.
And you had been in contact with, with his mother?
Yes, I talked to his mother and his mother was gonna come last week. We had planned to have it last week. And she was going to come then, but since we didn't have it then, uh, she's gonna come this Saturday. And I talked to his, um, brother and he's gonna come also.
Now, is his mother still living here in Plainfield?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, it's a shame. And they haven't found anybody that does-
And still, and after all the shooting that had happened, they haven't found one of the, uh, anyone that shot the gun. Any of the ones that are out there shooting these guns like this.
And, and how, how old was Coran?
He's thirty-one.
Wow, he's just a baby.
Thirty-one. And that's what's so frightening, but I can bet my bottom dollar that if something happened where someone in public office was shot, they would find that person by the time the sun go down.
Sure, sure.
Whenever it's one of our children that is shot down like this, I mean, it goes down underneath the rug.
That's why it's so important that we get involved and reconstruct the community because it becomes just a norm.
Yes.
You know, for, for, for this to happen.
Yes.
And our community, people take it that way, even the news reporters just, I know this is just what's getting ready to happen. And that's why it's so important to have, uh, 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 politicians just out there, let's invite, that's Adrian Matt, as I say. Right, I never knew he wasn't in office, cause he's always on point.
You're so right about that.
So we need to have, and he's a Democrat, so we need to have people in that, you know, that's, that's really in. Cause I mean, it's good to have on the national scene is a good thing. There's nothing wrong with that right there. But I tell you what, um, um, okay, we got to, uh, uh, forty-five today, uh, yes. So, but, but the idea is that it's just so important that we have politicians in the community that does the job too. Cause see, we can't, you know how we do, we can't put all our heart just in Washington, you know, we got to have the infrastructure. The league, you know, I mean, the plumbing line, don't just start in my house, it starts somewhere way down, you know what I'm saying? So we gotta know where we're going. We gotta, we definitely got to know where we're going. I just wanna, uh, let the audience know that today Town Talker will be going, uh, from four o'clock today, uh, to four forty-five. Thank you, uh, to Hobbs Radio. So, um, you've talked to, have you, have you talked to any, uh, police, anybody in the police department yet at this time?
No, I've talked to Mr. Helwig, uh, the prosecutor. And he's, uh, assured us that everything should go pretty well. Uh, I'm sure they'll have police force here. Uh, because of the area, the nature of the situation, the area that it's in. But, um, Brother Zachariah, you know how I feel about this. I, um, I really do believe that our, our children do need help, but I think they need that help as far as jobs.
Sure.
Are concerned. Uh, if they had jobs, then none of this stuff would be happening. I know, cause I'm in the same type of situation. If I was out of work right now and I used to get high, just like so many other kids. I used to smoke marijuana, I used to snore cocaine. I was just like the rest. And I might be out there with just a number, but because I got a decent job now, things are a little different. I got responsibilities.
God, God working within you too. God working within you, cause we know that you would, would find another way. And that's just so important that, that so many a time our heart is broken. I often say that, you know, that, uh, in our community, it was so important, I, 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 I tell you, me and my mother and father, father, uh, being blind when I was ten years old. We didn't have much or nothing economically. But I, I tell you, I thank those people for giving me, uh, the, the civil rights journey. You know, when I get a job, I'm not just thinking about me, I'm thinking about all those that lie down. You understand? And, 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 oh man, I tell you, that is the energy. They gave me that right there. They, they taught me the difference between, uh, slavery and the Jim Crow law. And they really broke it down, especially my mother at the kitchen table broke it, said it was that law. You know, it was that law that, that annihilated us more than the capture or the, 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 the structure of slavery itself. It was that law when we got out of it. And I tell you, I, I, I love those people just because of that. We didn't have much and nothing but cornbread muffins. But I tell you right now, I'll never forget that. I, I, I can't forget it because I tell you, they put something in me. And I think that when we learn our civil rights journey, and that's why it's so important, I believe that Ob- Obama get in office. Because he, him and his wife both are illustrating what it is when the government or when, 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 uh, organizations, when programs are put in position and people fully take advantage of them and make them work for them. And they both will tell you, you understand me, going to the Ivy League universities and things, you know? So it, 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 you know, the, uh, our spirit has to be re- related, related. Because I tell you, I, 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 I was talking to a, a friend of mine a few years ago that, uh, her goddaughter got a Martin Luther King scholarship. Now, listen to this. Now she got a king, I got mad at him. Got a king scholarship. I didn't get mad because she got the scholarship. I was glad that she got it. But the idea that she took an extra two more years to graduate. I said, well, just because it was a Dr. King.
I hate you.
You understand me? Just because it can't, you, you understand me? Just because I think I would've run a little harder. I would've, you know, you understand me? But that's me, that's what, you know, what would keep me going. That's what hold me together when things are crazy, you know? To guide me across the sea, you understand me? When I can't read the stars and, uh, GPS did not call my name. But it's just, uh, the journey of our people, my Moses that led people from, from Georgia, from the South Carolina and everything up to Canada, up to New York and sisters with their babies in their arms.
I hate you.
Gliding across the, the sea, wanna ice, just like a little piece of ice, just to get into Canada, to get away from slavery. You understand me? So when you know all that right there. Huh? Boy, when you know all that, you know where you got to go. And the ball has got to keep going. You got to keep, that you, you, it's not over yet and you don't mean nobody no harm. I don't mean nobody no harm, but if you got something, God, by God, bring it to the people. Don't not hold it back. This sister here, Denise, she has something. She has this, this, this program where you can get this food. Now, all those that, she said that, uh, uh, she gonna try to put a kosher package together and everything. And, uh, uh, you know, I want you to talk a little bit more about it. We got some more minutes. Go ahead, sister. Tell us what you can do for us.
Um, we also have, um, a senior box for, um, individuals who don't wanna cook. So therefore it's ten prepared, prepaid meals- So therefore, it's ten prepared prepaid meals that's already prepared. And it's ten meals. And these meals are twenty-eight dollars, and it comes with a um a starch. Two vegetables, a fruit and protein. So this is beneficial to senior citizens. That we're really um trying to help here and as well as anyone who doesn't wanna cook. And so in terms of.
Or today don't have time to cook.
Or don't have time to cook.
Give it to them, let's give it to them. Don't have time to cook.
Don't have the time to cook. And we also have boxes which are called special boxes, and they are twenty-one dollars. And these are, they don't come with vegetables, they're just meat packages. We have steak boxes, we have chicken boxes.
Now, now, when you say steak boxes, it's only steak for this?
It's only steak in those boxes.
Oh, okay, okay. And that's twenty-one dollars?
Twenty-one dollars.
And that equivalents what on the outside?
On the outside, it probably would cost you forty-five dollars.
Wow, wow, wow.
And so also, we have a vegetable box for maybe someone who's a vegetarian. And so that box consists of cabbage, lettuce, broccoli, potatoes, lemon, pineapples and apples and carrots. And stuff, and that box is twenty-one dollars. And so um this would definitely be beneficial to the community. Because as we've heard, it's definitely a time of economic stress and prices in the grocery stores are definitely increased. So therefore, um this food, uh a regular unit box of food of seventeen food items. Should last you for two weeks.
Wow.
Two weeks. And it feeds anywhere from four to six people.
Now, how how many boxes are, can you buy?
It's unlimited. You can get it as much as you want. There's no qualifications.
Wow, just the, just the money.
Just come out with money, uh with uh cash, a money order or your family first card.
Wow, and that's a wonderful thing. Now, um, okay. Do they have to show up at a certain place to pick the stuff up, or will you deliver it to them?
They, we um deliver on the fourth Saturday of every month, once we um we have a deadline. So you have to get your order in for October, by October the thirteenth.
Okay.
And the order comes on the fourth Saturday of the month.
Okay, you better get that telephone number out to this.
The telephone number is um Norine Coleman. She will answer this line and the number is nine oh eight. Five seven 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 two five nine or nine seven three. Six three four eight two six seven.
Wow, and do you have an internet address also?
Yes, it would be Clark, C L A R K, six ten sixty at yahoo dot com.
Wow, well, that right there is a good thing, um to to get the audience, to get the community up. Because you know, these crises that we we have to fix, see, this right here is bridging the gap because we're coming together on this.
Right.
And if you, uh uh the audience and the community will come together and and help uh uh yourself, actually. Um and and purchase uh uh the boxes in in mass number, then maybe, you know, we can develop, we can grow into something else. This right here is a start. Maybe next year we have oil, you know what I mean? You know what I mean? You never know where we're gonna go, because see, we. We can't keep doing the same old, same old. We have to change also. And I often say, communities like Plainfield, and which I do love, I wa- I was not born here. Uh uh communities like Plainfield, I call them suburban cities. A suburban city like this need to, need the constituents to reach out. You see garbage on the ground, pick it up. Become a part of your community.
You're right.
You understand? Don't just let the garbage be fall all over the thing. Pick it up, become a part, show people you're concerned about your community. Let me show you what concern do. When people see you concerned.